Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a couple of appointments. Just before I begin, I just want to thank Beverly and Michael for serving -- I'm sorry, Beverly and Walter for serving on the Fire Commission. Obviously, I mean William, I apologize. William, who served actually a long time on the Commission and was a valuable member of the Commission. And I do want to mention that the town of Fairfield sends its sincere sympathies for the loss of his child. Obviously, it's a devastating blow for him to lose his son. And I would ask for a motion to approve Michael Fineran. Michael, are you here? Hi, Michael. Nice to meet you. I've heard a lot of good things about you. To replace Beverly, whose term expired. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. I'm going to open it up. Would you like to share any comments?
Does he just, for the record, need to second? Or did you second?
I thought you seconded.
Oh, I moved. We can't hear you.
Tom, I can't hear you.
Kind of make it official, Mike. We don't want you to --
I don't want to be unofficial, rogue.
Do we fix it? Oh, it's his on him? Tom, you're still muted. We can't hear you. Saying it's on your end. Oh.
Bye, Tom.
Maybe it was an internet thing.
Can you second? You can just move on?
Yeah. All right. I'm going to second. I hate to bother you. Would you mind going up and just push the button? Thank you.
As I've said before, you want to put an armpit behind a mic?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Kiran and I know each other from just relationships we have with people in Yonkers, where I grew up, and where Kiran serves as a firefighter. And Kiran being in the school system got to know my wife, right? So if you go to Fairfield schools, there's a good chance you'll hit a Finerans because there's five kids in the public schools. And so he just got to my -- I think you got the second-best part of the couple. My wife would have been better at this, but she said she's just not quite ready. She's a daughter of a firefighter that served 33 years in East Hartford. So we're through marriage, you know, the Fire Department, I married into that, right? But we've lived in Fairfield since 2010. We're not going anywhere. You know, if people complain about property taxes, I said, as long as they don't charge per head in the school system, I'm pretty good. And we're just big fans of the services in town, right? We've had not many interactions with police and fire, but have had just an extremely professional experience every time we've dealt with them. On the Fire Department, it's just been much more of a support in the community, like we do. I was president of Lake Hills for a number of years, and we instituted the ice-breaking, like the Fire Department likes to do their training there. So we asked them, like, hey, could you do it as an educational thing for the kids and the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts? And that's been an annual event now, big time. Got to know Kiran over the years, so just interacting with them in the school system. Been here 12 years, don't plan on leaving. I work at Morgan Stanley, so I feel like I would not be an expert, but I could understand budgeting and what needs to be done as far as making financial decisions. Let's see, did six years in the Marine Corps, so feel like I'm not a firefighter, but I feel like I understand what it means to be part of a government team and kind of like decisions like this really, as much as I'm having a good time with this, like, these are life and death, like, decisions that are long-term, right? Decisions that, so I would like to, you know, be able to make good, help work with, like, you all to make good decisions for this town, which I think, this is a great decision to be made, so I don't think I'll be coming and changing much, but just to continue that good spirit that the Fire Department has, working within the community, and just hopefully making an impact. And I want to say I was honored when Kiran asked me to do this or put my name in for this, so.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you stepping up to serve. And I know you've served a lot in different roles volunteering in our community, and so we appreciate you stepping up again. And I'm going to open it up to now our full board. But Nancy, would you like to?
Yeah, I know both Mike and his wife. Both great additions, value-add either way, but we're happy to have you here today, and I'm excited and thrilled to be able to support your application. And I think you're going to be, your enthusiasm is awesome, and it's great that you're looking forward to serving in this way. And all the things you said just really resonated about the seriousness of it and your willingness to do it and that you want to serve in this way, even with the five kids and all the coaching and sports and all of that. And I think you're going to be a great addition.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I'll also be asking, like, for help and questions, like, right? Like, I think it's a big effort.
Well, we got the chairman on there, the line. I'm sure he'd be happy to help you with anything you need. Tom, would you like to share any comments?
I'd just like to say thank you for your willingness to serve, and I'd also like to thank the two long-serving reps that are moving on to greener pastures, as it were. I wish you the best of luck, and it sounds like you have a nice background for the position. So thanks again.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Do you want to take these together? Or just go to the next, and then we'll vote them out as a package, if that's fine? Our next appointment is Ginny Klinger, who I actually have a long, long history with. She was part of my One Voice group back in, when was it, Ginny?
Seventies.
It wasn't the seventies. Please, it was the nineties. I was a young girl in the seventies. We came together.
We've been, we've known each other since the seventies.
We, yes, but we came together. She joined the One Voice group, and we had many different areas of town who were trying to change government and make our elected officials listen, and I thought we were pretty fruitful. We got a lot done. And I'm excited that you applied for this because I think you're going to be great. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. And Ginny, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Just a couple of quickies?
Seventies.
Do I?
Brenda's like, come on now.
I would like to say that it's a --
Push this.
You just push that.
Thank you. This is Ginny. My name is Ginny Klinger, and I am honored to be asked to serve. I believe very strongly in the people in the Police Department and the Fire Department. And I'm looking at Mr. Henry sitting here. Hello, Mr. Henry. And I'm deeply honored, Brenda, Nancy, thank you very much. From my perspective, you can read my resume, anyone who wishes to, but an individual comes full circle when they have served their community. Then you have absolutely fulfilled your obligation as a citizen and in your democracy. You have then contributed the way that you should. I'm deeply honored to even be considered for such a spot. So thank you all very much. And any questions, I would be happy to answer them now or later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ginny, very much. I'm going to open it up to the board for any comments.
I'll just say thank you so much for serving. I mean, the fact that you're one of nine children, I think, suits you in any team situation, so if you can navigate that. And I just want to echo what I said to Mike Fineran earlier. It's great. Your enthusiasm is great. Everything that I've heard from you and from Mike, it's just really encouraging and hopeful, and I'm glad that you've stepped up. So thank you.
Tom, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you once again for agreeing to serve. You'd be a great addition to the board, and I thought your comments about public service were particularly poignant. And also, Brenda, based on your announcement, I'd like to send my condolences to Fitzpatrick family on the death of their son. I was unaware, and that's a shame. Nobody should ever have to go through that.
No.
I also just want to say, I mean, it's really hard to express in words how sad and tragic and awful that is, and just want to echo the sentiments and the condolences, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Well, we have two nominations and two seconds, all in favor of the two nominations before us.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Oh, Joe, did you want to say something? I apologize. Motion carries unanimously.
That's fine, because it sort of means more now, because I want to welcome both of the two new members to the Commission now that they've officially voted on. I look forward to serving with them and meeting them. And just to give you the heads-up, our first meeting is going to be Thursday night, 7:00 PM at the --
Jump right in.
Can I add on to that point? Because one of the things that we talked about was sometimes you have these amazing candidates, and then they just, for whatever reason, wind up not being able to give that commitment of time. And so I was pleased to be able to speak to the two of you today, who really understood that and were willing to commit that time, because I think the Commissions are only as strong as the people, not only who are serving them, but the amount of time that they put in. And I think that your willingness to give of your time so willingly just speaks a lot and, you know, wish you luck, because we have had some great candidates in the past who just, for whatever reasons, haven't been able to give of it. So appreciate that you understand what you're taking on.
Do they need to be? I'm not familiar.
They're going to need to get, excuse me, Joe pulls back again. They're going to need to get to the first, to the Town Clerk's office. Hopefully before Thursday.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you. Thank you both for coming today. It was nice to see you. And I tell everyone this, you're free to stay. You're welcome to leave, whatever you'd like to do.
I'll stay long for the next one, I promise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Ginny. Take care. Nice to meet you, Mike. All right. Our next appointment is, can I get a motion to approve Dave Henry for the Harbor Management Commission as an alternate?
So moved.
Tom?
Second.
Very good.
Second.
So this is a vacancy created by Libby Tischler, and David Henry is here. Hi, David. Nice to meet you. And if you, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Hello, everyone. This is on, we're good. So I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude and thanks to the town of Fairfield and for those that serve a wonderful community, including yourselves. I consider myself to be lucky to have been born and raised here in Fairfield and actually come from a long line of dedicated Fairfielders. The tree that's planted on the corner of this property on Beach Road and Old Post Road is in honor of my grandfather, Robert P. Henry, who once served as Town Clerk amongst many other positions here in town. Another than four wonderful years at the University of Virginia, Fairfield has been my home for my entire life. And my working life has always involved educating students from Fairfield in some capacity, and that continues to this day. My current role is a Director of the Bridgeport Regional Aquaculture Science Technology Education Center, more colloquially known as Aqua. Having a keen interest in Long Island Sound as well as state-permitted clamming grounds just here off Southport Beach, the management of the waterways and harbors in Fairfield is important to me. So I'd be very happy to be part of the Harbor Management Commission to continue to act as a steward for Long Island Sound. And as anyone growing up in the Fairfield or the Stratfield area could tell you, if Ms. Klinger says that this is a good move, it's wonderful to hear. So I appreciate her kind words and blessings, and again, thank you to all of you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you stepping up and all your experience, and I think it'll be really helpful to the Commission. So I appreciate you stepping up to volunteer for our town in this capacity. Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the board.
Yeah, it's just fantastic that you're willing to serve and that you have the amazing experience that you do. And of course, we're suckers for our teachers, so thank you. And Aqua is such an amazing, amazing program, and what an incredible opportunity that our students have, and lucky in that regard with your stewardship, but also for this Commission. So it's a great posse, so I think you're going to have a good time with that group.
Tom?
It certainly seems as though your background is a good fit for the Commission, so I wish you the best of luck and thank you for volunteering to serve.
Thank you.
And if there's no further comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thanks again.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Take care.
You too.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
All right. Our next item is item number four. I'm going to read the account number because that was the edification earlier, Nancy. It wasn't in the, it wasn't in the backup, but to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with AKRF to provide on-call transportation engineering services as detailed in bid 2023-33R for a total fee not to exceed $48,480, and the account number is 145010-59996-81014. This is the ARPA Fund Traffic Cams that we talked about during the ARPA presentations and funding requests. And I believe Gerald Foley and Bill Hurley. Do you want to, Bill? Do you want to, just quick? Yeah, I mean, yeah, this is just on the contract, obviously, and the town attorney's on the line, and I believe he did review this. But this is obviously approved a long while back now, but as things work, it takes a while to get through the process.
Yes, so, thank you. So what you have before you is, we did an RFP for on-call transportation engineering services. The town owns 16 traffic signals, so what we were trying to do is to have, we hire a firm that was going to basically prepare and evaluate the townwide, actually, fair and evaluate our townwide traffic signal inventory. We wanted them to review existing traffic plans, prepare emergency plans, a traffic signal controller, and documentation. And then at the end, we wanted them to assist the town in preparing basically a long-term plan to maintain and service the traffic controllers. We had submissions from six companies, and from those six companies, we shortlisted the three companies. And from that shortlist, we've recommended the company AKRF out of Stanford, Connecticut, for that fee not to exceed $48,480.
Okay. Yeah. I'm going to open it up. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. Quickly, just, Brenda, you alluded to it. I just didn't, I just don't know what the response was. Mr. Baldwin, you reviewed this?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Jim Baldwin here. I have reviewed it, and I will tell you that there are some minor tweaks that need to be made to the agreement. But as you've done in the past, I would suggest that you approve with a caveat that it be subject to the town attorney's review and approval of the final terms.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Secondly, this is, as I recall, this isn't just about whether the signal lights and things are working. This is also about the timing of those signals and how to improve traffic flow. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct, Tom. It would be a complete inventory of all the equipment that we have, and a very detailed RFP was put out that would gather up as much information as we need for, to go further in all the traffic designs, traffic signal designs.
Mr. Hurley, I would assume, though, just clarify for me, does this include also the state roads that run through town, or do those come under the state's auspices for making sure that, from a traffic pattern standpoint, they work?
Typically, we would have to go through the state on that. We do have it on. We would, could have in the future, if these, this consultant does a good job, we could hire him as an on-call traffic signal consultant, where if we wanted to look at a particular state signal operations, and the state was either delayed or didn't have the manpower or the funding for it, we could possibly look into that in the future. One thing that we do have, though, which I think was very important, we had the Fire Department here, we are having them look at the preemption equipment on the state signals, because even though they are state signals, the preemption really is a benefit to our Fire Department, and therefore, it is equipment that is, quote, "maintained by the town."
That's great. Bill, my apologies, kind of a sidebar note here, and real quick, because I don't want to bela, I don't want to pull us off-track at all. Blackrock Turnpike, that study is ongoing. Where does that stand right now, very briefly?
The MetroCog had submitted that plan to the state for further comment. The state has done some of the comments, but not all the comments. We do have a project on the capital plan to do a LOTZIP grant. That is still in the hands of the state. And then just recently, just last week, the administration, town officials, and myself met with the MetroCog Director, Matt Folda, and that was brought up as well to see if, again, if we can get any further grant money, or at least let the regional planning agency know that this was an important topic and project.
Are we talking years on this? Thank you for the update. Are we talking years, Bill?
For that, there would probably have to be phases. If we were to do everything in that project, it was, I believe, a price tag of $30 million, so we would do certain phases and attack it that way.
I support this. I think if the traffic has grown in town and as we see new developments, really straightening out the traffic patterns and the timing of lights, it's a frustration for everybody, and as you correctly said, it can also be a safety issue. So I'm glad to see this moving forward, and I'm hopeful they come back with some good quality recommendations that are easily implemented. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else? Is there any comments from the public on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And thanks to our purchasing department as well.
Yes. Gerald has got a lot of things to look at all the time. Okay. Next item is, can I get a motion to hear, consider, and act, I mean, and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with Tucker Mechanical to provide repairs of the primary digester tank at the Water Pollution Control Facility as detailed in bid 2023-85 for a total fee not to exceed $1,437,53, with additional authority to execute change orders to said contract in the amount not to exceed $143,000 for a combined grand total not to exceed $1,573,753, account number 13011110-59500, from the operating fund authorized appropriation from the WPCA surplus. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So this obviously is, we're getting close to the repair phase of this. We are all very familiar what's been going on there, and this is, now we're at the point where we can start moving forward with the actual work on this. And Gerald, do you want to just briefly discuss it?
So hi, Gerald, Gerald Foley again. So this is Phase Two of this project. So we hired a company to go in and basically clean it. At the conclusion of the cleaning process, we had our consultant go back in, relook at the inside of the tank, and then what they did, we prepared a bid, and now we're going out for repair. We had two submissions that came in, and we're basically brought before you the company that submitted the low bid. What we've done is we've basically taken the base bid plus all the alternates, and the rationale is, is that our consultant recommended that we take it that way, because once we get into the tank, they're going to go in and going to reevaluate what is actually necessary to be done to the tank. So we prepare it, prepare it, and complete it in the appropriate manner.
Questions from the board? No. Tom?
Where did, yeah, how much, Gerald, how does this come about, or Jared, with what we thought this was going to cost? Because we originally had scoped this out and said, we think it's going to cost this much. Where do we stand on that?
I'm going to defer to Jared. I think the number was less than what we initially had, but just to be on the safe side, I'll defer to Jared.
Tom, are you asking what we, what our estimated amount was?
Yes.
We didn't really know, honestly.
Well, sure.
Before, before there was any, before we went out to bid for this, we didn't really know. I think we had a range of like $1 to $2 million, but we didn't, I don't think anybody was really given a hard estimate on how much it would cost.
I thought, because that's a, not a full or hard, but I thought we were given an estimate.
Well, we had approved spending up to $1.75 million.
Right.
Yes.
Exactly right. That's correct, Nancy.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So thank you for the answer there. Okay, so this is below that?
Yes.
Fine. I'm good. We need to get it fixed. I mean, it's somewhat of an emergency situation.
We are moving on all cylinders, minus the digester.
On all digesters.
So if there's no further questions, is there any comments from the public on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Can I get a motion to hear and consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the engineering manager? Resolve that the first-elect woman, Brenda Cupchik, be and hereby is authorized to accept on behalf of the town of Fairfield, the 2022 Connecticut Steep Grant in the amount of $500,000 for sidewalk rehabilitation and extension. And further resolve that first-elect woman, Brenda Cupchik, is hereby authorized and to enter and to execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain the 2022 steep grant with the state of Connecticut. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Tom?
Second.
Okay. I'm going to open it up. Bill Hurley, would you just like to talk a little bit about this?
Sure. I also want to introduce Raymond Smith, who's making his Fairfield Board of Selectmen debut.
Hello, everybody.
So anyway, this request is to construct a new sidewalk and repairs and provide connectivity to the Post Road and Fairfield Center. With support of the neighborhood, a new sidewalk is proposed for Round Hill Road. For Reef Road, new sections of sidewalk will be replaced as needed. The engineering and DPW will provide in-house design and specifications. The project is covered under a $500,000 reimbursement steep grant. The state requirement was to have all acceptance resolutions approved and return to them within 15 days. We were able to request an extension of six weeks, you know, for the town approval process. The property owners along Round Hill and Ermine have been waiting three years plus for sidewalk funding. The sidewalks would provide access to Ludlow Schools, Fairfield Center, US1, Post Road, from Round Hill and from Reef Roads. There are several areas of the existing sidewalks on Reef Road that are uneven and in poor condition, and that would have to be replaced probably within the next year or two. The alternative is to do nothing and lose the grant or perform repairs on a site-specific basis. The $500,000 represents a maximum amount of award possible, so we did get the maximum amount, emphasizing the importance of the project. So right now before you is the, to approve the grant because of the time-sensitive nature.
Thank you, Bill. Tom, anything?
Yeah, thanks. Bill, is this going to be the entire cost? There's no other cost to the town other than accepting this grant and expending these funds? Or are you going to stop when you run out of funds? Like, what are we, you know what I'm saying? Is this enough to do the project appropriately? Or are you just grabbing these funds and doing what you can with them?
Well, with the application, we, it was basically required where you would have preference if you had a 20% town match, so we do have a 20% town match. With that town match, it can come from non-recurring capital, possibly from the DP, I mean, I'm sorry, DPW or housing and development budgets. Or we're going to also check in to see if in-kind services are allowed, such as design. Hence why we're just going for the grant approval right now, and if we say were to use the non-recurring capital, we'd have to go back to the boards for that fund. we'd have to go back to the boards for that funding.
Do you have it in your budget? It's about $100,000 then, right?
Well, if we do, basically then we'd be taking it out from other neighborhoods, to be honest with you. This grant came up after last year's budget process. I think it was during the summer when it came up. And we thought, again, being that especially for the Round Hill Road sidewalk, we have been unable to fund that project. So we thought it would be a good idea to have this one. And through Bucky Marsilio, he had suggested that he does some walking in town and noticed that Reef Road wasn't too good a shape either. So if we could combine the both and go for the maximum grant, that would benefit the town. And so that's what we did, and we did get awarded that.
So that means that at some point in the future, you will probably be coming back for your non-recurring capital for $100,000 in support of this project, right?
That would be correct, due to the deadline of, you know, again, the 15 days. We just want to make sure we got the grant in hand.
And when would the work be done, Bill?
Well, right now, the Round Hill Road portion is completely designed. The Reef Road section still has a little bit of design work to be done. So if, assuming that we were able to get that done in, say, by the spring, we put the project out to bid in the summer, and we could probably start construction in the fall. That would be a realistic timeline.
So the design work's already been done. Did you already spend money out of this?
No, the Round Hill section was done in-house, the design. That's one of the reasons, we're checking on that to see if that's eligible. A lot of times, though, they'll say that it's only from the agreement. And so we can't, we can't even start the process until all the paperwork is signed and get everything done. The state of Connecticut is very strict on, you're not allowed to expend and ask for reimbursement until the contracts are signed.
Yeah. And the last question I have, do you contemplate this being done within-house labor? And just, these are the material costs? Or would this be going out and hiring a vendor to do the work?
We would hire a contractor to do the work.
Okay, so this is the all-in-cost labor's and materials?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
If there's no further questions from the board, is there any comments or questions from the public?
Welcome, Raymond.
Yes, I just want to introduce Raymond. He's one of the three new members of our engineering department. And how long have you been now?
Just about six months.
That's right. And you're doing great, actually.
And we also have Christine, but I think she's appeared before you.
I think, yes, you have. We have a lot of new faces, and we're very excited to have both of you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Joining Meg, and joining Meg's engineering department, and we have a whole new
Meg is celebrating her one-year anniversary, so.
Yeah, you're almost here. Yeah, you've been here, you're like an old one, old timer now. Back in the 70s. I don't think you were even born. All right, there's no further questions. I'll bring it back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to thank Bill and team for putting together this and getting us this funding. Obviously, this, anytime we get any grant funding, helps our community a great deal. And I'm always personally looking to expand our sidewalks, improve our sidewalks all around town. So the funding comes in very handy. So thank you.
Thank you. It was a team effort. I do want to mention Terry Brown, our grants coordinator, Mark Barnhart, some members of engineering, and even the Fairfield Bike and Ped Committee who had written a support letter. So thank you.
Absolutely. And we did actually mention, I don't know, I know it was a rather long year in review newsletter, but I did want to, I did want to make sure I was recognizing people. And Terry has been enormously helpful to, you know, being part of getting us $7 million in grant funding since she started working with our team. So she's been invaluable to our community and very, very appreciative, for sure. Okay, our next item is item number seven. Can I get a motion to hear and consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the engineering manager resolved that the first select woman, Brenda Cupchik, be hereby is authorized to accept on behalf of the town of Fairfield, a Connecticut Community's Challenge Grant, round two, in the amount of $3 million for replacement of a 2,800-foot section of the East Trunk Sewer Line. And further resolved that first select woman, Brenda Cupchik, is hereby authorized to enter in to and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain the Connecticut Community Challenge Grant with the state of Connecticut. Motion to approve?
So moved.
And this is another one. I mean, this is a huge win for us. Obviously, we're very familiar with the infrastructure issues we have throughout the town that are really antiquated, and our town has grown so much since the infrastructure has been put in. And this trunk sewer line, you know, feeds 60% of the community in our town, and it's valuable and important. Like, I sometimes like to joke to Mr. Devanzo that flushing a toilet is really important, and people do value it as soon as they can't flush their toilet. So I'm going to hand it off to Bill.
Thanks, Brenda. I'll just do a quick background on this. The East Trunk Sewer Line, as you mentioned, handles between 60 and 67% of the town sewer flow to the treatment plant. The sewer was originally constructed in 1947 and follows the layout of Ash Creek. There are indications that the pipe is sagged, has joints opened up along a couple of sections. The construction of the, and also for future development as well. Construction of the new sewer line will significantly reduce what they call INI, or inflow and infiltration, and sanitary sewer overflows. It will provide easier maintenance access and better resiliency against the Ash Creek flows and rising sea level. The project proposes to construct a new sewer line within the public right-of-way. It will also reduce some bottlenecks and increase capacity for future development. The project is about 90% complete and has been reviewed by DOT and has all the necessary permits necessary to move the project forward. The proposal would be a 36-inch new sanitary sewer line. The project would probably take between 14 and 18 months. The estimated costs do cover $900,000 of contingency, 7.9 million construction, $850,000 of inspection. There's $50,000 remediation and $40,000 to $300,000 for updating engineering plans and testing. A few alternates were brought up in the past. And more recently, constructing a pump station, which would have been more expensive, creating a bypass or overflow pipe, relining the pipe, looking into trenchless technology, and obviously the do-nothing alternative. Each alternative was investigated conceptually and some more in detail than others, but were, as I said, anticipated to be more costly, less feasible, or practical. The new sewer line would have a 50 and hopefully 75-year service life. And as I said, just like with the other grant, because of the timeline, we're just right now looking for the acceptance of the $3 million grant. We would have to come back with the request for the additional funding. And as you know, we'll be meeting with the Board of Finance, and I imagine all the boards as well, with a comprehensive WPCA plan. So we're here to answer any questions. Joe and Christine are here as well, if you have any.
Tom?
Thanks for coming to me. So Mr. Devanzo, just funny that the first select woman said she flushes her toilet and thinks of you.
I said I would think of it if it wasn't flushing.
All right. Second, second point. Bill, you said something about being, in your presentation there, and thank you, you said something about being 90% complete. What exactly is 90% complete in your?
Well, back, sure, back in 2019, the original plans were pretty much ready for, to go out to bid. When they had submitted with their final plans, the design, I mean, the probable costs of construction for this, it took everyone by surprise, because even back then, the price of steel and several other construction items had gone up. And we really couldn't get secure funding for this. The project had gone up from the original amount of, I think, 2.5 million, which was definitely underestimated, and it was around the range of 6 to 7 million. And so we kept on hoping that a grant would come along or do something to help with the project here. And so this grant had come along, and again, the same group of people, Mark and Terry and engineering and WPCA, all chipped in to, for information for this grant. And hence, we were able to get the grant. It was a very competitive grant as well.
Yeah. Thank you for the work in getting the grant. What do we think, I mean, ballpark it, I know you're not here for the presentation on the total thing, but what do we think the number is around for this?
Well, for the application, we did say it was going to be 10 million. That does include 900,000 for contingency. And then there are a couple of other components in there for updating the design if need be, making sure that, you know, nothing's changed in the last two or three years that would affect the project. And then we just, matter of fact, last month, we did confirm or extend our permits. They're good to 2025, so that, we're good on the permitting as well.
So the project a few years ago would have cost us an estimated 7 million. Now it's going to cost us 10 million with a $3 million grant, so we're back to around the $7 million mark, we think. And I know those aren't tall, do you numbers, but that's kind of where we're at right now, right?
Yeah, that, in nutshell, that's probably correct. The only thing, though, is even from 2019, you know, the prices were kind of fluctuating there, and we could have, it could have easily been eight or nine million at the time. That was just based on the engineer's estimate.
And this will, this isn't just replacing the existing pipe. This is also, I think, as you said, this is increasing the capacity for future development down there?
That's correct. Right now, the most of the line is a 33-inch, and this would be now a 36-inch, which, if I remember, I think provides us about 15 or 20% additional capacity in the future if the metro site and others, you know, on the King's Highway neighborhood are developed.
Right, right, which we know, I mean, we hope is going to happen in certain aspects, so.
That's correct.
And we got about 80 years out of the existing pipe or thereabouts, right?
That's correct.
And isn't it true, Mr. Hurley, that if we don't do this, we can't even consider the bigger development, one? And two, isn't it true that this is a priority project that is shovel-ready? So it's important to, and shovel-ready is in quotes, but important to do this so that we don't delay another three years, so that it doesn't then come back to us?
That's
New question.
Yeah, that's, but you know what? Nancy, you're correct on that. And then the other thing, not to be overlooked, too, is the SSOs that, you know, you have groups of Clean Long Island Sound or Fund for the Environment that are constantly asked, are after municipalities to make sure that they avoid or reduce the, what we call the SSOs for environmental reasons as well. And unfortunately, this area is susceptible to them. So by showing these environmental groups, who in the past have gone after and sued municipalities, that hopefully this shows that we're trying as best we can. So I just wanted to bring that up as well.
I don't have any other questions.
Is there, excuse me, is there any questions from the public, either online or in person? Seeing none? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Where are we? Item number eight. Can I get a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting dates for calendar year 2023? At 4:00 PM via WebEx and in or person, as always, hybrid, January 30th, January, excuse me, February 6th and 13th, March 6th and 27th, March 3rd and 17th, March, May 1st and 15th, June 5th, June 19th, July 10th and 17th, August 7th and 21, September 11th and 18, October 2nd and 16th, November 13th and 20th, December 4th and 18.
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, I'll open it up. Is there any questions about this item?
Yeah, two things. One, I just want to say I appreciate personally the hybrid, the continuation of that. I think it's really helpful for working people, and I hope everyone agrees. I know some people have something to say about it, but I personally appreciate it and want to say thank you for continuing with that. And then do we have a sense yet of which of these meetings will be, what budget meetings are going to have been?
Yeah, I was going to typically include the budget schedule, but I wanted to wait till the end of the month, just working out a couple little more details. But those will be approved by us at the next January, our next January meeting, before our budget process starts.
So at the January 30th meeting, we'll?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, thank you, and I want to concur, obviously, with what Nancy said about the hybrid. It's been useful, so I appreciate that. The second item, and Brenda, you told me about the budget meeting, so I appreciate that as well. The one question I had was, are we allowed to actually vote on two meetings? That'll be for the next board, which are the two December meetings. In the past, I thought we would vote on that, kind of going through their, the organizational meeting of the new board and not into, not far beyond that. I'm just, I'm just questioning that, that's all. Not a big deal.
I actually don't know, Tom. You know, Jennifer's been setting up these things for 20 years, so I deferred to her. She set the dates up and
I would imagine we could, because it's not, otherwise, any meeting after would have to be a special meeting, right?
Yeah.
Unless it's
No.
No, because it could be done in advance.
Sorry, you guys just went off here. See you there.
Yes, we can see you and hear you.
Okay, because you guys all of a sudden went dark. Typically, the way it used to work on the, on the Board of Finance was they would do their organizational meeting, and then they would vote on their calendar the first time they met, which meant that we would set the schedule for the first meeting beyond the election so that they, so that the board could organize itself and put together a calendar that worked. I just bring it up as a question, more than a huge concern or anything.
I think my understanding is that typically it's mid-November when swearing-in ceremonies happen for all elected officials. And maybe they just put the two dates to have on the calendar for whomever is in office. They could, they obviously are free to cancel them, postpone them, or do whatever they want. But at least they have meetings scheduled to be able to do the town's business with all the other things that are coming online.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm all in favor of just voting for them and then
Okay, very good. And I just want to thank you both, you know, for your comments about the hybrid meetings. I know there's maybe a couple boards who don't like them. But I think they have, I always said that, right? During the pandemic, the only good thing to come out of the pandemic was that we learned we can do business in a more efficient way and be available to the community too at large, without them having to drag themselves out, you know, sometimes in the rain or the snow or whatever it is, so that they can participate in meetings and that we can get the business of the town done. You know, if you remember when we were in the heat of this, this was right after we passed our budget, and then the pandemic hit, and, you know, we were sort of stuck with figuring out here And, you know, we were sort of stuck with figuring out here at Town Hall, how can we run a government? How can we go through the budget process without being in rooms together? And frankly, I think the whole world has learned how to modernize and be efficient as far as getting business done. A lot of people work remotely now because of the pandemic. They've learned that they can be more productive, don't have to spend a lot of time in commuting. And so I'm happy to offer this, because I think it is helpful. And obviously, you both are professional people who have occasionally, you know, are not available to be in person, but still want to participate in the meetings you were elected to be part of. So I'm all for it, and I think it's a good advancement for our community. And I think all boards should be using it. They do have the option under the governor's orders, and we have spent a considerable amount of ARPA money to allow this opportunity to take place for all our boards and commissions. And I hope they take advantage of it.
You know, it's nice to be in the room, but, oops, sorry. I was just gonna say, it's nice to be in the room, but as someone who commutes, and we see you with your space needle in the back there, like, it doesn't mean we take the work any less seriously when we're online. You know, in some ways, we're able to focus differently, because we don't have to worry about the commuting and the rushing and the train and/or travel.
Or missing.
Or missing. So, you know, I echo everything.
Yeah, I agree, and it's also, we didn't even bring this up. Sometimes we have to have special meetings if something becomes a, needs a quick vote of paramount importance. And the ability to do it remotely allows us to get those on the calendar as well.
Absolutely.
It'd be much easier. So I appreciate it.
Fair point. All right. All right, well, thank you. Or we'll have to vote on that, so we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of those dates?
Aye.
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 This is just an administrative thing. Can Jennifer send out, she's been doing it, sometimes the calendar invites just for the board, so we can get them right in? She's been doing it as a courtesy.
Oh, yeah, yep.
It would be great if she would.
Yep.
Very helpful.
Very helpful.
Yeah, very helpful.
And, all right, so we have no, this is, I think this is a special meeting, right? Because we canceled, so there's no new business. But we do have executive session, so I want to thank all of you for attending. Good to see you, Joe. Good to see you. All right. We're gonna keep Attorney Baldwin on, and we're gonna go in, I think Attorney Aiken, is he?
Should I make a motion to go into?
Hold on. Oh, some of the phones. Attorney Aiken, are you on any of the phone lines?
Yeah, I just, I just came on.
But what?
Can you hear me?
Yes, so he would be calling user four? You see him? Wait, one minute, Tom, one minute, Tom. You're also on user three, Tom? Okay.
I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what user I am.
I think you're three, because it's lighting up when you talk. Okay, so that's who needs to stay on.
So everyone right there is good?
Correct. Except for we don't want the TV, we don't want to be recording.
No, so I'll pause the recording.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Did we?
Go into executive.
Yeah, we didn't go in.
Oh, can I have a motion to go into executive session? Nancy?
I'm making a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So moved.
Hold on, not ready.
Sorry.
Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the record, there were no votes taken in session, executive session. Can I get a motion to proceed with the settlement agreements at the recommendations of council?
So moved.
Second it.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Nope.
Any discussion from the public? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Safe travels, Tom.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.